So it is seven in the morning. We're going to call the meeting to order and ask if at this time there are any additions to the agenda. And ask for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
That's all.
It is by council and board, submitted by council and baron. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes, yes.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. We do have one presenter here this evening. Uh, we have Martin Thompson and Phil Nash. Who said the Strait of Kansas Sustainable Infrastructure Strategy. Welcome and thanks so much for coming. We'll hand the reins over to you for presentation.
Thank you so much. If what you see now is a background to Waterford Energy Services, so I'll just kind of just give that here. Think Phil will give you a bit of a background to Waterford Energy Services as part of his presentation. Oh, I should say. Okay. Okay. Thanks for worship. Thanks, council. Thanks for allowing me to speak here today. Uh, it'll be a bit of a double act between myself and Phil Nash, uh, from Waterford Energy Services, who's joined us virtually. Uh, so basically I will speak a little bit about the context around how this work was conceived. Before I hand over to Phil to present some of the key findings and highlights from the report. And after Phil has done his presentation, I will then jump back in and speak to a bit about the next steps following the strategy. So this piece of work forms a part of a wider program of activity that we call the Strait of Kansas Green Energy Capacity Building Program. Quite, quite mouthful. And this program came about through a funding proposal that was submitted to the then Nova Scotia Department of Natural Resources and Renewables. And Atlantic Canada Opportunities Agency for combined, combined eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the town of Hawkesbury and the municipality of the County of Richmond both contributed seventy-five thousand or three year period to this program. Uh, which was a decision made by previous councils. And that takes the full program cost to nine hundred and fifty thousand. And in addition to the infrastructure strategy, uh, the program also includes a feasibility study for an offshore wind center of excellence. And the staff position that is myself. Uh, the offshore wind center of excellence study will be presented to council at a later date when that's completed. That piece of work is probably a couple of months behind the infrastructure strategy that we're talking about today. And in terms of myself and my responsibilities in, in my position as manager of energy sector development. It's been to oversee and support both sets of consultants on these two pieces of work. Um, and, and now that these reports are, are, are nearing completion, I will be the one mainly responsible for ensuring that we keep momentum. As we start to implement some, some of the, uh, these recommendations. I also support existing businesses in the area with green energy ambitions. And I respond to investment inquiries from potential new investors and or close to with the Cape Breton Partnership, um, in, in that working. Uh, I also try and seek out new opportunities for, for our municipalities in the green energy sphere. So an example of that, we have a, a pending application to the Nova Scotia Fuel Fund for, for a domestic use strategy. But for hydrogen ammonia, e-methanol in our, in our local economy. Um, still waiting, uh, the decision on that application. Uh, back to the infrastructure strategy though, uh, this work is meant to increase understanding of the assets in the straight as they relate to green energy. And rather speaking, there've been three motivations for this. So one, as these are new industries, there's a need to increase understanding among local stakeholders about what we have and what we potentially can be. Two, provide a platform, uh, from which we can market the area and, and the opportunities, uh, that we have for investment. And three, understand where the Strait of Kansas fits in alongside other ports in, in our region, so Atlantic Canada in particular. Um, for example, there's some wider strategic reviews of port readiness, uh, for offshore wind in the region happening. And this deep dive into the Strait of Kansas should help to inform those studies as well. Um, a project steering committee was established early on in the process, uh, that consists of the, these four funding organizations. As well as a representative from the municipality or the district of Geisborough, as you can see from the report. It's a strategy that relates to both sides of the, of the straight. So around this time last year, we developed an RFP and had it out for tender. And following that competitive procurement process, we awarded the contract to, to Waterford Energy Services in January. So the scope of the exercise really focused on three sectors of the green energy industry. Green hydrogen and, and ammonia production and export, onshore wind and offshore wind. And, and through that lens, we asked Waterford Energy Services to define what the needs of industry are. Analyze the current port infrastructure capability and readiness. Analyze current industrial infrastructure. Identify both direct and indirect opportunities as they relate to green energy. Uh, and review and present case studies from ports elsewhere that, that has gone through similar transitions in the past. And finally, propose potential plans for what development could look like and how it could be phased. So with that, I'll, we'll hand over to Phil, who will take a focus of the highlights in the report. I believe I'm changing the slides for Phil, so Phil, if you could just let me know, I might just change the slide. And I just see Blair McDougall also from Waterford Energy Services has, has joined us here today. So that's great. Good job, you, Blair. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Yeah, thanks, Martin, and thank you everyone for having us, uh, here to present. Oh, no. Can you hear anything? Hello?
I, I can hear you, Phil.
Oh, the sound is not on.
Hello?
That's on her computer though, so I think, am I connected to the?
Oh, I see.
Just see.
Any better? Hello?
I can hear you, Phil.
Yeah.
I think try that's just to stop the involvement. Try, try there now, Bill.
Hello, can you hear me? Not able, no?
This is supposed to be you.
We can hear you. All right, you guys can't hear us?
You're good now.
You okay?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. All right. Okay. Thank you for, uh, having us here to, uh, present our, um, report. Um, so yeah, we're going to go through a brief agenda, uh, as Martin discussed, um, so we can go ahead, Mark.
Oops, sorry.
Yeah. Yep. Yep. Go to the next slide.
Go.
Yep. So our objective, uh, was to study, uh, the study was to understand the Strait of Kansas, uh, the infrastructure, but in particular the port infrastructure. What's available and, uh, what may be needed to support renewable energy projects. Uh, in parallel, uh, Wesley was actively working projects in Sheet Harbor in Sydney, uh, visiting ports in Maine, province of Rhode Island, New Bedford, Massachusetts and France. So we're increasing our capacity, um, just through other activities that, that were ongoing. Okay, next. So for, uh, the background of the study, we looked at, uh, straight of cancel studies. There'd been previous reports done, uh, at, at various times, um. For the straight, looking at different infrastructure that may come, different activities, uh, whether it's coal, oil and gas and things like that. Uh, we looked at international ports to help understand the state of the industry or it's more mature, uh, especially in Europe. And then the port infrastructure that's established in those jurisdictions. We also look at the U S port capacity, uh, so what's in place and, and new developments that they may be working on. And that's important because, um, the U S, uh, is having some capacity and, and other restrictions to moving product into their ports. And so we've already been, uh, supporting their businesses here in Atlantic Canada. And then, uh, outline the requirements for ports based on activity. So when you look at fixed or floating wind, uh, they have different, uh, requirements of their port infrastructure. Uh, and as well within each of those, uh, tech, uh, technologies, uh, marshaling for fixed fabrication, O and M and manufacturing. Uh, are different than are required for floating wind. Significant effort was, uh, put into the stakeholder engagement and, and an effort to connect with as many key stakeholders in the areas we, uh, were able. Uh, so we reached thirty organizations, uh, to conduct face-to-face meetings, which there were sixteen face-to-face meetings. Uh, and we, uh, did in virtual meetings where appropriate or where we just couldn't make any other, uh, uh, means to connect. The takeaways from the stakeholder engagement, uh, supportive of the project scope and potential for the straight. Um, most of the people were, were very open and provided a lot of key insights into the facilities and what their potential or they thought their potential may be. And the other, uh, big takeaway was that they were unclear of what renewable opportunities may come to the straight or their site in particular. Not fully understanding the size and scale of some of the equipment that needs to be moved to support the offshore. And how, uh, that may fit within their, um, the boundaries of their facilities. So snapshot of the stakeholder engagement in the, in the companies that we reached out to. So we were very fortunate to reach just about everybody throughout the straight area as well as some, uh, international, uh, people and some developers as well. Okay, so now I'll dive into the, the work that was done. So we'll start with the onshore wind. Go ahead, Martin. So as we began our study, um, the original thought and focus was to look really at the offshore industry. Because we knew the U S was already started and the scale of the onsh, of the offshore Nova Scotia that had been talked about. Um, but as we talked to the stakeholders, uh, became very clear that the onshore wind is a major issue, major component, I guess, uh, of the area around the straight. So there's upwards of three and a half gigawatts of onshore wind in the forecast. A lot of it is, uh, identified for Geisborough Mulgrave, uh, to support the powered X projects. Um, Mulgrave Marine Terminal is ideally situated to land the components and then distribute them to the sites. And these projects are expected to run from twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty and depending on the phases that may come in, uh, to support those, uh, project X pieces. So it's a large potential scope work for the straight. And it's more immediate than either fixed or floating wind at this time. The one caveat, uh, related to this is that these projects are, um, destined to support the power to X. So there is some uncertainty on its development timelines. Okay. So the, the, to support the power to X, uh, plants are planned in Point Tupper, so Everwind and Bearhead. Uh, the electricity is being generated on the mainland, so it does need to be moved across the straight. Uh, components that are used to build the facilities, um, cannot cross the causeway. Uh, so they must be received via water, uh, in Point Tupper. So there can be different solutions for that, but it's, it's going to have to come via water solution or warp structure. So right now each of the developers pursuing an individual structure. And so one of our early thoughts was that a common user port could be a solution, uh, in order to support both parties, um, and be a, a legacy piece. Um, however, the timing may not work depending on when their projects develop. Okay. So we look at offshore wind and we, we did a scan of the international, uh, landscape. So we want to look at the ports, um, what they have, what they've done to support, uh, themselves. Um, and really what looked at is the magnitude of the operations for marshaling, fabrication, construction, operations, maintenance, and then manufacturing loaded components. The, they're large components, uh, very heavy components, uh, take up a lot of space. So there's a, you know, quite a strict, uh, combination of port infrastructure that's required to support some of these activities. Okay. So we produced a snapshot here. Um, so basically we've looked at the major components. So we look at monopiles, the transition pieces that would go on top, the blades and cells and towers. Cables, uh, and operations and maintenance port, and then a transportation corridor. So this is supporting fixed offshore wind. And basically we looked at the space requirements, the bearing capacities that would be needed of the, of the structures and land. Uh, the water depth needed for the vessels that would either receive or depart with these components. And then the sizes of these components. So we produced a similar, uh, table, uh, for floating, yep, on the next page for floating. Uh, and there's obviously some similarities between the two technologies. However, for floating, uh, an onshore crane is required. Um, and as well, uh, the foundation, um, either construction or, or fabrication of a foundation, which could happen at a local port. Uh, needs a significant amount of space and, uh, heavy bearing capacity. The operations and maintenance port, uh, requirements could change for the floating side. Because there's the opportunity to float the structure back to shore. And when it's fully constructed, it needs a deeper water depth. So whereas sticks can, uh, get by with a shallow water depth for operations and maintenance, because it's very small maintenance activities. The floating technology could require, uh, a very deep port in order to support that, uh, operation. We also looked at manufacturing. So again, most of this, uh, is done in Europe at the time and is supporting the North American market as well as the European market. Uh, and again, with the large components, uh, and the vessels that are required to move these components to their, uh, destinations. Uh, we've looked at the land and the loading dock and, and water depths that would be needed, uh, to support this type of work. Okay. Uh, apologize if this is a little bit small probably to read, but, uh, you know, it's all in your packages. So this is basically a, a summary of all the port infrastructure, uh, throughout the straight from Mark Marietta. Um, down across to the other side to Everwind and Bearhead. Uh, we did include the, uh, Melford Terminal because it is such a, uh, feature that could play prominently in the industry. Um, as well as the proposed Bearhead Facility and the proposed Everwind Terminal, uh, that, sorry, the warp terminal, not the jetty. As you can see, the majority of these are quite shallow water depths, uh, with very little lay down space in the near area, uh, next to each of these wharfs. Which does restrict the ability to today, um, support the offshore, uh, wind industry. Okay. So when we talk about a common use report, uh, again, we appreciate the fact that the Mulgrave Terminal on the mainland side has a lot of capability to support various industries. However, on the Cape Breton side, uh, there's not a specific common terminal or port that's in place. Uh, one of the areas that we looked at is Cas Cove, uh, basically between the Port Hawkesbury Facility and the Nova Scotia Power Plant. Uh, so what we show here is a rendering. Um, this is to extend the wharf to approximately a fourteen meter water depth, which should hopefully future proof it against some of the deeper vessels that may come. Uh, this is approximately two hundred and fifty meters from land, uh, at its nearest point. And in this rendering, it's about thirty-five acres of, of space. Uh, again, these show some wind components on the wharf. Uh, these could be, you know, small loads of wind components for repair or maintenance. This is not intended necessarily to be a large lay down yard where more like fifty to sixty acres would be required. Um, because of the fact that most of this space is, uh, uh, gained by infilling. Uh, so this can be a mixed use port, obviously, for any local users on the Cape Breton side who want to transport goods, um, across, uh, in, into, uh, water. That's via vessel, um, and or components that want to come into the, the area, uh, from water side. Okay, next. Um, similarity with the, with the Melford, uh, terminal. So you've likely seen the renderings of the container, uh, piece that was previously done. And what we've done in speaking with the, the folks at Melford is, is understand the capabilities of the site, the additional land and area that they would have available, uh, potentially. And so what we've done is we've not touched the container side at all. And we've put an extension on the sort of northwest side, uh, to include a wind development. So here you see a heavy lift vessel pulled up with, uh, components that are stored on site. And obviously, based on the business case and the, the desire of the, of the developer, um, the area could be expanded, um, to, uh, to include a more water access and more, uh, roll-on-roll-off type, uh, warp structure and as well as lay down area in behind. Okay. So from all of the combining the international port requirements and, and what we've seen and the, uh, applicability to the, uh, local ports in, in the straight, uh, we developed the scorecard. So against those key, uh, pieces, manufacturing, assembly, fabrication, marshaling, integration and O and M. And so basically we've looked at the ports and scored them, uh, as applicability today. Uh, the ones that are in the orange-yellow are potential. And those all would require some type of, um, development and, and infrastructure, uh, redevelopment in order to take it. So Port Hawkesbury Paper, for example, uh, may be able to do some of these tasks, um, but not today. Okay. One. Uh, so again, taking another look at the scorecard and particularly at, at what we have here. So we know that hydrogen ammonia components need to come in, uh, somewhere, uh, and eventually land on the, the Cape Breton side. We've got onshore wind component receiving, onshore wind storage, offshore wind marshaling, offshore Canadian fixed bottom, uh, installation. Offshore Canadian floating assembly or installation yards, and then offshore operations and maintenance and servicing. So here we see a little bit more potential. But again, for most of these, uh, ports that are identified, uh, there's increased, um, development that would have to happen. Whether it's a deeper water depth, a more robust warp structure, or an increase in lay down area to support these types of activities. Okay. So as we went through all the activities, um, conclusions and recommendations. So the volume of onshore wind planned for Nova Scotia is a great opportunity for the straight area. Uh, turbine component delivery and access to green electrons. The onshore wind cost and volume may challenge the viability of Canadian offshore wind. So because onshore wind is going to be a more economic, uh, project to pursue in most cases. It may compete for the same capital that the offshore wind, uh, area and, and infrastructure is looking for. A port solution on Point Tupper is required to support the hydrogen projects, so the receiving of the components, not, not the delivery of the ammonia. So there's an opportunity to utilize a common user port to support those projects. And that common user port would be an asset which would outlive the life of these projects. But in any case, any port or infrastructure that's being looked at, uh, definitely needs to consider the environmental aspects and, and concerns it may be in the area. Okay. So the existing straight ports do not extend into waters deep enough to support the heavy transport and installation vessels associated with the wind farm construction. So new wharfs or modifications to existing ones are needed to be part of the industry. And I'm talking about to a major part, not to, to do, uh, very small tasks, let's say. The U S offshore wind can be supported by Canadian ports. However, if the supply chain from Europe changes to a more local industry, there's a risk of opportunities for Canada to be reduced. And one, uh, topic of discussion is Atlantic Canada Constellation Port Approach. So if you look at any projects that are built in Europe or in the States, none of these ports or very, very few of these ports are, are one-all, be-all ports. Cables may be at one port, monopiles at another, turbines, towers, the cell pieces at another port. And so that's typically the approach that developers, uh, work with. And ports then get very good at one aspect and are able to be very efficient at that aspect. And don't necessarily get congested because they're trying to do everything. So this is likely to play out for Atlantic Canada as well, where we see several ports supporting any given type of project that may happen. So Halifax, Sydney, Strait, Argentia, there'd be several ports that would need to be used in order to develop any type of major offshore field. Uh, attracting renewable energy industry original equipment manufacturer, or OEM, is a strategic endeavor which can complement the port capability of the region. So be that blades, cables, foundations or tower pieces. Having that manufacturing capability cannot only support the Canadian industry, but could also support potentially the U S industry or other export. And be a long-lasting, um, very supportive piece of, uh, industry for the straight. The O and M base or basis for offshore wind farms can be supported from the straits' local industry. So right now there's a capability of supporting operations and maintenance if needed. However, until we have offshore wind, uh, the, the O and M bases are, are not going to be required locally. And based on a twenty twenty-five seabed license, uh, we're looking at potentially twenty thirty-two or beyond for a development in offshore waters in Canada. So the near-term efforts of the straight should be supporting the onshore wind and the hydrogen ammonia markets. Optimize the logistics for the wind turbine component receiving via Mulgrave Marine Terminal. Provide storage area for components to avoid congestion on the wharf. Longer term strategy, the Melford Terminal Construction to support container and renewable energy industry. And if developed, to think about both fixed bottom and floating capability. And also pursue a common user port on Point Tupper, so it can support the industry without water access. So any of the businesses that are, are landlocked. Potentially receive wind turbine components for the Cape Breton side if there's developments that look to happen there. Has a potential for marshaling, fabrication, manufacturing or O and M of offshore turbine components. And so further analysis of Cas Cove location is the common user port on Point Tupper is, is suggested. Okay.
Okay, thanks a lot, Phil. So we are almost at the end here. Um, in terms of next steps. And we will, we will look to publish the strategy over the next week or two. Um, and from there, further engage with the industrial players, uh, identified in, in the strategy. And really try, try to get to the bottom of what did the owners of infrastructure have an interest in pursuing out of all of this that, that, that Waterford Energy Services has, has suggested? And then develop some implementation plans from that. A way to utilize the strategy now, though, in the very short term, is to use it as a platform for marketing the opportunities in the area. So my intention is to use the information in, in this report, uh, to set up a, a bit of a digital one-stop shop for, 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 for port infrastructure in the straight. So this would basically highlight the specification of each port asset in, in one location. Uh, we plan to host that on the straitofcans dot C A, which is, uh, an initiative under the Cape Breton Partnership, which is basically a, an investment attraction site for, for industrial and marine investment. Um, and this in turn sets us up for this broader regional collaboration on ports in relation to offshore wind. For example, N S U Atlantic awarded their contract for an assessment of Atlantic, uh, Canadian ports to support offshore development in November. Uh, that particular study will not go into as much detail on each port as the strategy has done on the Strait of Kansas. So our local strategy will certainly ensure that we are well represented within that broader, uh, study. I also hope that the piece of work N S U Atlantic is doing will be the first step in proper and genuine port collaboration on offshore wind in Atlantic Canada. So basically this strategy helps us to get our own ducks in a row, uh, when we engage in, in, in a wider strategic collaboration. Okay. So this is the last slide. So this strategy has given us a good idea of how our infrastructure matches up against the requirements of each offshore wind deployment phase. However, we won't know the exact requirements of industry until we've had the auction round for seabed licensing, which is expected to take place at some point in twenty twenty-five. So once we have that, that will provide us with clarity on the actual location of projects, who the developers are, what technology will we use? And, and, and from that we'll have a much better idea of, of what the specific port requirements are. And from there, we can understand how we fit alongside the other ports in the region and then seek to leverage, uh, investment into the needed and appropriate, uh, operation there. The strategy can also be used by anyone locally, uh, when speaking to interested investors. Uh, this includes owners of the core infrastructure themselves, as well as any proponent, proponent of the area. I think you'll be able to draw, draw out most answers, uh, to request for information regarding green energy in the straight of cancer from this document. And another next step for me is to explore this concept of a common use support in Point Tupper a little bit further. Obviously, Phil spoke to it quite a bit. Um, we really think this could unlock some opportunities for existing businesses in the park and beyond. But also increase the attraction of available land that, that, that's currently sitting there without water access. And as has been stated, this concept currently lacks a clear business case, but we think it's worthy of further exploration. So for example, and interestingly, uh, the Cape Breton Partnership published a recent cement study for the Strait of Kansas a couple of months ago. Uh, and there's very strong commonalities in, in that report, uh, around the concept of common use support. So, so we'll continue to explore that. So these are some of the things that I will continue to work on, both locally and, 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 and more regionally. And, and with that, I think I'll end it there. So, so thank you so much for, for listening to us. We probably went over time a little bit, um, but yeah, if you have any questions, we'll, we'll be happy to answer.
Yeah, and I think it's, uh, important to afford all the time necessary to review this. A very important opportunity for straight area, for the Hawkesbury. Um, but thank you for the presentation. We'll open up the floor for any questions or comments. I know I have a few questions, but I guess we'll, we'll, we'll go around first. If we may, did you want to comment first?
Uh, I'd like to first say, uh, welcome, uh, Phil, personally, to Port Hawkesbury and to Mr. Blair McDougall. I'm looking into the owl. I don't know if you can see my face, so when I look at your face, I'll probably see a side going. Uh, on the whole, I think you had a pretty good document. There's been several studies done in the straight and hopefully we'll see some action, but, uh, got another study. And we did put yours to use already. So that must mean we seen some good in it. Uh, we made, uh, the town of Hawkesbury made response to the regional assessment. And, uh, we referenced, uh, portions of this draft document, so that was helpful. Thank you for that. Um, I made some minor recommendations to, or comments to, um, uh, the man on the ground here, and they got to use them. Thank you for that. uh the man on the ground here, and they got to use them. Thank you for that. Uh I'm not on the uh group that makes comments this, and I have several, but for the interest of time, I'll just kind of summarize it down to two now, I guess. One is on the common user component. You mentioned cast cove. Uh that'll be my second question. And I guess kind of the first question would be with respect to the Mulgrave Marine Terminal. And Phil, I don't know if you have your the document in front of you, but I'll just uh uh reference to uh page uh nine. And it's the second paragraph, and it says the Mulgrave Marine Terminal should continue with onshore wind developers to maximize the force we saw building wood supports. I wonder, Phil, you talked about, you know, different ports, different, you know, one looking after the nacelles, one looking after another component. Maybe another port uh looking after the blades uh over Christmas, New Year, we had the uh purpose built uh sea installer, which is a self elevating um ship that brought a load of defective blades from Martha's Vineyard to Sydney. And she was uh in for weather in inhabitance bay in the straight of cancel. Given the fact as we read in all over Scotia today that, you know, investment was put into the Mulgrave Marine Terminal, there's a new bridge in place to take land based blades off. If you feel that offshore blades, like the one the sea installed brought from Martha's Vineyard to Nova Scotia, could fit over that, maybe we could, you could reach out to uh the CEO of the Superport Corporation, see if they could, could we add that into this document that the existing infrastructure today in the straight of cancel can already handle offshore wind components like offshore wind blades? That's my first question. If you just want to make any comment on that or correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know the exact dimensions of the bridge that was installed. And obviously, when you start to talk about the offshore wind components, they do grow in size and length. So the the typical onshore blade, maybe eighty meters or so, we get to the offshore blade, um we're looking at a hundred and ten meters uh plus. Um and obviously, the diameter will will grow as well uh supporting that. So I'm I'm not sure exactly how that would would uh fit across the structure. The the case of the blades may be um one that can certainly uh be be looked at. And, you know, from a repair standpoint, let's say one or two blades were dropped off. I think that's something that absolutely could be looked at from an O N M perspective from from the Mulgrave Terminal. Um from storage of the blades, it may take a little bit more work to to look at that. When we talk about other components, uh they come in on heavy lift vessels and they would um come off the vessel in a different manner. And as well, the water depths that they be looking at are closer to twelve meters minimum for the for the heavy lift vessels in order to come to port. So there may be restrictions on some of these uh different components to be able to unload at the terminal, just based on the on the vessels uh without some additional work done to the wharf.
Okay, good, Phil. Thanks. The sea installer, which brought them from Martha's Vineyard to another port in Nova Scotia, has a six meter draft. So she could accommodate, she's carrying defective blades into there. But anyhow, maybe we can check with uh uh Guilfoyle on the pluggability of that install of the offsite location. And it just, if we can add to there, you mentioned three acres of lay down on the site. And then adjacent to the facility, the ring terminal, there's large acreage lay down that might be a comment, but that's for further investigation if if appropriate. More kind of bigger question, I guess, that'll have this be my last one, just due to the interest of time. Uh and I like to get someone else, because I'm not on the, I'm not appointed to the group that uh addresses this document to.
Street committee, yeah.
Okay, fine time. So, and then this is kind of on governance and which is the sticky question and common user. He addressed Casco, and I think there's other areas that could be looked at as a common user site and with deeper water, but Casco was a good one. I'm just wondering how a common you, who the would administer that as a common user? And I know it's cited in here when you were contracted on page seven. Items which were not included in the scope of this were were the investigation of other Canadian ports, which could potentially have similar capabilities in the straight. And port governance and business development in the straight area. Port governance. And then on page seventy six. I'll just go very quick here. We 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 address port governance in this document. And getting down to the last two paragraphs of page seventy six, I'll do it quickly. Now just read the last paragraph. Having local governance with the state in the ports is made easier by only having a single entity responsible for port development. For this rate, the multiple independent owners and governments involved makes the port, makes this more difficult to implement. I agree. And we don't have a single voice, and I think that is harmful. So if it's not for governance, what? And how do you, what would you see as the workaround in that? For an operator of a common user facility like the one you illustrated in Casco, which I like. Do you have suggestions on how that, who that common user would be or what that organization could look like for us?
So so obviously, you know, timing would be one thing if there was a case that the, because the hydrogen development is obviously on a bit of an accelerated timeline. And and there's obviously a lot of more work needed to be done to establish a common user port, location permitting and 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 all kinds of activities. However, if those two lined up, you have two um quite large players uh that would be very close to that area um who may be willing to take a stake in that facility. Um because of the fact that any facility that they would design and and build is used for the construction of the, let's say, phase one. And then while they are producing uh ammonia, the jetty is used for the export uh of the product. And there may be tugs at the wharf, but really that wharf structure that's been designed to withstand significant weight and and material um is not fully utilized. So if that common user port was to be built and those projects could share that port. It's a very equivalent kind of structure that both need, they'd be both be bringing in similar types of component pieces in order to build their facilities. Phase one, phase two, phase three, whatever sort of develops. Um so one opportunity would be that those two uh parties are major stakeholders, let's say, in that war structure. And then there'd be some other party, whether it be municipal or ownership or what have you, uh in order to take up a another portion of that facility. And then do the long term care, maintenance and access and being able to get grant access to other parties. Uh so, you know, perhaps a straight super port, uh you know, has this as a as a uh as a another entity within its portfolio as well. So there's a several different, I think, options. Um and it really comes down to, you know, certainly if the hydrogen players, ammonia players are involved. Then I think there can be a a case that that they are a piece of it. Uh if not, then now you're looking at the other users in the area and the other infrastructure, people without infrastructure that are looking for uh an ability to move product over the water. Um so that may then lend to a different, different model, different uh different ownership structure and different model.
Thank you, Mr. Nash. That did great cooperation. I'm hopeful. I had said that two questions, one, just one last question, just look at my notes, and thank you for your comments, Phil. On page forty one, we talked about wet part or wet storage. And I'm referring to, and you know, we're referring to uh space for uh storage of uh floating uh foundations, as you know, for those that are here for underwear. That that's a key asset for uh, I think, uh when determining a location for offshore floating wind. And and there's a little bit of comment that I thought that might would have warranted a bit more uh emphasis, but do you have any comments on that?
Yeah, I I think that you're right that there's uh the capability is there. The deep water um allows just about any of the offshore floating structures are designed to date to come in. There'd be very few, like a spar type that may be restricted on its uh ability to to be uh within the straight area. Um I think the reason it wasn't sort of uh expanded more really came down to timing. Um you know, there's a potential for a a smallish uh floating wind project in Nova Scotia that that's being, you know, talked about quite significantly. Um beyond that, fixed wind, um offshore wind really has taken over everywhere. And as those spaces become less available, um people are moving to the the floating wind. There's not as much uh maturity in the industry right now. There's there's very um little definition of what the really a good design is going to be to make an efficient design. So the costs have not come down to be competitive with the the fixed wind. So really, I think it 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 came down to a bit of the fact that fixed wind really is where Nova Scotia would more than likely see the majority of its initial uh uh development. And so floating wind is, you know, if we're talking twenty thirty two for fixed wind, then floating wind is is beyond that in in the distance. So not discounting the fact that the straight is is able to support that industry. Uh it just, I think, came more to the fact that the timeline is is significantly out there. And so it becomes more unknowns as far as what floating structure be used um and, you know, where where it may occur.
Okay, and I'll just have one last comment is on that point, you know. I guess one could assume that where we don't have the infrastructure in place, Nova Scotia to do the bill, though, that there will probably be a lot of government money coming to for investment. Is that a fair statement?
Yep.
Okay, so when public money is being spent, I think that it should go to the area where it has the mo, you know, the most ability to get a return on investment. And if floating wind isn't that cost competitive today, but it's coming down and getting closer. I think that that money should be spent in infrastructure and ports, which have the ability for wet storage, which is very beneficial for floating wind. And if that's not tomorrow, and that's time down the road, and that is an advantage that the straight has over other ports, that it should be emphasized more. That's just my opinion.
Yep. Yep, understood.
Well, I think there, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Councilman Corr.
I just have six questions.
Don't stop there.
Well, I I did wanna say thank you very much for the presentation uh to you, Mr. Nash and and Hugh Martin. It's a it's a good read. This is lots of information for sure, but uh lots of challenges, but there's lots of potential, right, going forward? And so I think it's a great piece of work that we've got that document together now and keep moving forward with with efforts around the development. So anyhow, thank you very much.
You had mentioned about the components being manufactured in Europe. Do we know what the capacity of manufacturing in Europe is? You know, is there, you know, that opportunity for manufacturing?
So right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, I'll do quick, quick bit is that right now Europe is supplying both European uh industry and the American industry as well. Um but Europe isn't slowing down in their efforts at this point. Uh so certainly they they're, you know, building capacity, but but are also, you know, um utilizing that capacity to support all that industry. The U S has got two hundred and fifty ish megawatts of installed turbines today. And before yesterday, we're looking for thirty gigawatts uh by twenty thirty. Now that that thirty gigawatts may not happen, but essentially they they've they've very just very started their industry. Um they're also quite restricted on their port infrastructure and the ability to build out manufacturing capacity and things like that. So certainly I think there's an opportunity for uh Canada to to support them and ourselves.
And if I may add, you're also seeing more and more Chinese companies uh sort of manufacture, like do manufacturing in in Europe. So so I think that there's there is probably scope if if the pipeline projects is is long enough, which is again before yesterday or today, it looked a little longer than than it might be, but but yeah, yeah, I agree with Phil. There should, there should be potential.
Okay.
Uh any questions, Paul? Uh I don't have any questions, but I'm not as versed or well invested as Deputy Mayor Langley. He's uh very knowledgeable for uh just, you know, covering many concerns. Um but I'm sure that we covered reducing renewable energy, um the greenhouse gases emissions and the local concerns about uh environmental footprint. And but I'm sure that these will all be well like big concerns or.
So that's the 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 projects?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes. So so I I guess it it it, you know, they will be producing green power, but I I guess in and Phil, I can speak to this much better than I, but the full life circle of the construction projects like that. Transportation and and industrial processes, I I I think there will be some carbon emissions associated with that. But you compare that full product lifecycle to 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 other energy sources like gas, coal, or or et cetera, it's uh it's much reduced. I hope Phil and Blair will agree with me in that.
Yeah.
It's interesting. Thank you for the uh
Thank you.
The evening was nice. Thank you.
Um I just have a couple of questions that builds um on Deputy Mayor Langley's uh comments and questions. Just on the topic of a common user port, I know you have discussed in the uh the two two major proponents here in the straight of cancel. But in terms of like mo, like the models uh internationally for common user ports. Um is there a model that blends uh private and and public ownership? Or is or are there common common user ports that are all publicly funded and and uh administrated like what? Yeah, I guess what it's a great idea, but in terms of like, who's going to pick up that ball and run with it? And who's going to fund that? And and what does that look like? I guess that that was a a key question as I was reading that recommendation. So I guess that I'll start with that and hand things over to you.
Yes, certainly, um public funds would be required, I think, just to the scale that um is being considered for, you know, what's needed to support these. So, you know, uh it's it's not a small endeavor, uh what what the common use support would be in order to support it is if it's supporting the offshore wind industry. Um again, the large components, deep water, so you have to extend a certain distance. You have to um create uh high specifications of of the facility in order to to meet some of those requirements. Um when we looked at some of the international jurisdictions, you know, there were some municipalities like Rotterdam, Bruges um that have ownership in the port. Um obviously, those are massive ports uh with multiple industries. Um but then you get a common marketing perspective, you you have revenue that's able to support the the port and and development and strategically position themselves to, you know, the next the next industry, you know, offshore wind, hydrogen and things like that. So um again, did not spend uh a significant amount of time studying uh the full port um ownership structures of of all these ports. I was certainly um more related to the the scale of the activity and the the physical nature of the ports versus the the ownership. Although we, like I said, we did take a a little bit of a a light approach to to looking at that activity or looking at that aspect.
Yeah, I I think it's a great recommendation, and I I think it's definitely going to require more than uh privately owned, uh I guess, facilitation of that recommendation. You know, sometimes, I don't know, depending on the business model of the given proponent, you know, there there may not be a willingness to contribute to something that 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 would be on the user facility. Um or maybe there would be, so I guess that that's part of the conversation going forward. I just wanted to um ask, I guess, what what kind of that, if there was a universal model or if it kind of fluctuates across a continuum of what that um the governance case may look like for Casco? The other question that I have.
Sorry, could I, could I make a, could I make a comment?
Absolutely, Blair.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt there. So Blair McDougall, I'm president of Waterford Energy Services. And first of all, thanks for having us here and and we're we're really thrilled that we had a chance to do this work. But on on the the, I think a good example for you to look at because of its location and its recent is in the state of Massachusetts. So it's not Europe, it's North America, so I think that's important. Europe is a bit of a different animal. I don't think there's any silver bullet for governments uh governance in that it there there's different uh, you know, scenarios that will drive different regions in different directions. But in the case of the state of Massachusetts, that the state made an investment um at at least ten years ago. in advance of, you know, sort of an envisioned offshore wind industry. So they invested in 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 three areas in the state, uh New Bedford, Salem and Somerset. And I can't speak to the governments governance exactly for those uh for those areas, but basically policy was was put forward by the state government. Board of Directors was established and they, you know, they sort of imposed uh high level guidelines on how, you know, the the ports should operate, uh what their size should be, so on and so forth. And I I think not to get into a, you know, a a a deep dive on on this right here, right now, but I would suggest to to counsel that would be a really good example that we can take offline and talk through with you. Um, in in terms of how to to crack this nut, so to speak.
Oh, thank you so much, Blair. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Um, the just one last uh question that that I would have um in terms of just look look reading through the material. Uh, kinda took a first flush read through the draft when we uh was working with the deputy mayor on a um regional assessment submission for feedback from the town. Um, but I'm just wondering if there was any consideration given um to infrastructure related to innovation like an AMRAP or testing sites. Um, I'm just seeing like where we're like this industry is just emerging, it's so new. Uh, is that was that given consideration in terms of potential here? Uh, just to be able to facilitate um companies, whether they're um, North American companies or whether they're European or other international companies that want to test their product here, particularly on the on the floating wind side of things. Just wondering if that was given any consideration in terms of some critical infrastructure pieces that, you know, you might have been seeing in other in other ports that uh could maybe uh lend potential or some kind of competitive advantage here in the straight of cancer. Thanks.
So Martin may wanted to take on some of this, but it certainly, when we look at international areas, um there are uh areas set up similar to force where there's a a structure uh underwater that's been uh positioned by local government or or research bodies um that will allow um offshore wind turbines to connect, uh sell their power to the grid and then be a a testbed area where they can withstand real life conditions, not just in a bathtub or near shore. So these are, these are open water conditions and and um a a group that we had worked with in the past in SciTech in Spain um has their demonstration unit now um in their test area. Um, and it's been producing for about a year. Um, and and that's a si- like I said, a similar thing to force. So with this study, we we did not necessarily look at that type of infrastructure. Um, but I think and potentially the the work that ACOM is doing, um, may be looking at that.
Yeah, so so if if I may just jump in, that that is more specific part of the scope and this the other strategy, which I I said is a couple of months behind this one, but but that type of idea is being addressed in 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 that study. It's being worked out right now and and will be reviewed by the student committee.
Oh, that that's great. I think um at I don't know if we could kind of marry those two concepts at some point, because I think that you know, we do have the right puzzle pieces here to be able to uh, you know, create uh that the fit fit to meet that need for innovation around ARS or testing zones here in the trade of cancer with, you know, um, obviously, you I don't have to uh review all that we have here. We like literally have the multi-page document in front of me that provides that, but uh I guess that that would be, I think, a critical piece of developers or um, you know, other investors are are looking at the straight again, so just to kind of mention our capacity around that. And and even just to tie in our capacity for education as well, for training or for etcetera, but thank you so much for your presentation and and uh for being so generous with your time this evening. I really appreciate it. And thank you, Martin, for coming this long.
Yeah, thank you so much and appreciate all the questions as well.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Take care.
Thank you, bye.
Bye bye.
And so we'll go around quickly uh for council reports on assigned communities. We will start uh with
Councilor Hart. Yep, thank you, Your Worship, for coming. Uh, so, um my committee was um Eastern District Planning Committee, we had a meeting and the committee focuses on zoning reviews and restructuring planning concentrations. Um, and I'm looking forward to everything with the process and developments. Um we, um, there were nominations made and your worship. Chair and Terry as treasurer. Um, talk about the finances uh and budget is the main uh topic for discussion this time of year. Um, it was nice just to be a part of a broad and diverse table uh which included other municipalities and uh looking forward to reporting further um programs. Um, also on Friday morning, the uh syllabus, um took part in of code conduct, um and it was a training session designed to ensure all uh councillors understand their rules, maintaining their roles and responsibilities uh with transparency, accountability and uh ethical governance. Uh, topics include conflict of interest, professional conduct, decision-making standards while upholding trust integrity and accountability. And it was uh very insightful and I'm sure.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, and we're also gonna.
Um, I attended the Joint Police Advisory Board Meeting uh on January the fourteenth. Some of the issues that were brought up uh in the town, uh speeding in some of the subdivisions, Camerac, uh um McCory Drive, Cranial Road uh were brought up. Um, issue about e-bikes and concerns and speed of e-bikes, uh an issue with the engine braking in the town. And the detachment did say they had a plan to address this. Um, concern was raised by uh Deputy Mayor there about uh capacity of the detach detachment if we see growth in the town. And they said they had uh some discussions about it and would have further discussions uh if if need be. Uh, District Commander Dave Moran reviewed the statistics year over year and there wasn't mu- much in the change, so there was no no real change, but they they were dealing with some staff shortages, but uh that's being corrected and uh and the frontline officers uh will be equipped with body cameras starting in February. So uh the other, that's it for that. The also attended the Cape Breton South uh healthcare recruiting on Saturday, last Saturday. Um, it's important, uh, you know, if we're going to attract growth and retain the population, we need healthcare. And so if we can, uh, you know, have that strong commitment to uh retain the healthcare professionals on all levels, um, that that's going to be crucial to to seeing growth. So we we had a good meeting, Gina McDonald as a navigator is doing some great work, uh both uh both in recruiting and and retaining some of those and recognizing some of those healthcare workers. Um, some of the notes there, there was some high level of opti- optimism with a doctor visit, uh site visit later this week and uh, we had some discussions about the possibility of a re- residency program in the area too, so. Yeah.
Thank you for your report. Uh, Councilor Gordon.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, I I too attended the meeting um Saturday for nine to twelve. Um, and what the meeting was, was the first time we had an in-person meeting of that committee. We've always done it by Zoom, but this Saturday's uh uh purpose for meeting was to review the goals and objectives that we set for the committee back in twenty twenty and just see where we've progressed and what things we still have to 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 work on. So anyhow, um, so it was a very, it was a very helpful meeting. Um, I did, I I left two brochures there for you and the other counselors. So this is a booklet that uh Gina has just put together and it's on council career, um jobs, like potential jobs for students and she goes to schools and and does presentations and she's got this resource together now. That's that's a positive thing. And then there was another booklet that she has that when she does attend um conferences and looking at ha- having residents come here today, tours and stuff, it just to give a little bit of a background information and that picture of what what the area has to offer. Um Thursday was the Eastern County Regional Library meeting. And we have three new members. Um, we have um Warden Jim Fuller from District of Saint Mary's. Uh, Susan Cash and Counselor for Geysville and Catherine Gillen, City Council for Inverness. They're now on that uh committee. We took a delivery of a vehicle uh before Christmas that we were waiting for for a year and a half. It's at the end and um for us to use to get our um books to and from the uh post office and different libraries. So we're very pleased to get that. Um, I just mentioned that in St. Peter's, construction is underway and renovations are being done in St. Peter's for a new library service. That's it. That declare Franken has been spearheading and Inverness County Council has made a commitment of proceeding with the establishment of a new library in Wyckergo, like the community center. So um, positive things. I just go back and because it struck me and I think of all of this at that meeting on Saturday. Gina mentioned that uh a state rich one all year ago had about a hundred employees. And she said now there's a hundred and seventy employees at the state rich one, which I couldn't couldn't get over. So pretty significant. Um Yeah, so that's all I have to say. Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Deputy Mayor Langley.
Yes, Your Worship, uh through you, you're present. Uh, I also attended the Joint Police Advisory Meeting on January fourteenth. And this morning along with uh Counselor Barrett and I have some notes in that meeting. But Counselor Barrett's synopsis got it all covered. Good job, Counselor Barrett. Thank you. Uh, also on January the fourteenth, I attended a straight cancel offshore wind passport meeting. And it's been sometimes as part of that group and then we join and I'm uh trying to figure out where we're going to go and but there's lots, there was uh there was a lot of involved inside of the straight. It's a good networking at least from that. Along with Counselor Hart and Counselor Barrett, I attended uh the last two sessions of municipal uh finance training for elected officials. And uh from that, I would say that you could advise the uh our Director of Finance to expect lots of questions. Unfortunately, and I sent regrets, I was unable to attend the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities Code of Conduct Training Session and I fully adore that as the town does. And that will be a good tool for all municipalities, including ours, in governing ourselves when we encounter breaches. So that's a great tool to to help us. Uh, we also reviewed and gave input in addition to comments I've made at our last meeting last week on a letter to the Bank of Montreal. And uh for residents and taxpayers, particularly those who are customers of that branch, uh we are advocating for them and I'd like them to know that letters on maybe public that we've invited Miss Talk uh to come to the straight to see potential growth, which her is financial institution will miss out on. Um, and in addition to that, I've been logging much time in preparation for a meeting this coming Friday on the Green Enter Show. It's all interesting.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Deputy Mayor. And just on your comment with Barrett to the Bank of Montreal, I noticed uh there was a recent publication of a letter from our MP Mike Tullaway. Um, as well, I'll try to see if I can find it on social media and I can certainly circulate it if it isn't already in our inbox, if it may possibly be.
And you're with him also to that, uh you know, the customers who live near should know that the Minister Moro is the, his letter is public
Perfect.
On his application for us.
That's that's wonderful. We need as much leadership as possible to step to step up and and um voice their concerns and and encourage uh them to pause and rethink their decision. Uh, so I will just give a very brief uh um full update. So for the uh straight of cancel offshore wind task force, uh we did have a a whole membership meeting on January fourteenth um that Deputy Mayor Langley mentioned. Um, also an executive meeting, which is a just a smaller group that helps to formulate uh our agendas uh for the full member meetings. So I attended one on January, on January eighth. Um, with regard to NSFM, I had um some meetings uh with the broader members of the NSFM Board on December thirteenth, um January thirteenth and January twentieth. Uh, we're smaller meetings as a part of the nominations committee for the uh two uh vacancies that we currently have at the NSFM board table. Uh, we had a successful mayor skate on December eighteenth and I know it sounds weird bringing up a Christmas update. Speaking of January, uh but it was great. Uh, December nineteenth, of course, um, you know, we all had the opportunity to to speak with and meet with our MLA Colonel Corey, which was which was great. Looking forward to our next opportunity to to speak with him. Um, and follow already mentioned the uh Eastern District Planning Commission meeting from January ninth and I sit with the current uh chair for that. Um, and I also attended an AMA meeting on January tenth. Uh, just to speak, uh, sorry, last, uh, for January fifteenth. I attended a SETI Senior Council Meeting. Um, I participated virtually. Uh, and we also had a Cape Breton uh Regional Enterprise Network meeting as all meeting on January sixteenth as well. Um, and just to also note, um, just this past Friday, I would have attended Code of Conduct only. I was invited to a meeting uh with Mayor Fillmore, um, along with a few other urban mirrors to discuss um urban needs and strategy uh for the next uh for for this oncoming term. Um, just to be able to to work with partners and be able to position uh the problems for growth from the urban side of things. And upcoming uh is an accessibility meeting for January twenty seventh. Uh, and I also have a um invitation uh to meet with our new uh Lieutenant Governor Mike Savage for January thirty first. So I'll have an opportunity to to chat with our new Lieutenant Governor, which will be wonderful. I'm happy to uh bring an update with care to be a couple of that meeting. And I think that concludes every other updates. Everybody's good. We'll move on to CAO reports. Over to you, Aaron.
Thank you, Michael, Mr. Stans. Happy to hear Terry's the new president for.
I know, I was saying.
Um, so I'm gonna move things over to Michelle Pharaoh uh to provide an update on uh marketing, recreation tourism. What were you, Michelle?
Thanks, Erin. Good evening, everyone. And and through your worship, I'll just get right into uh my brief report on the Recreation, Marketing, Tourism and Culture Department. Uh, starting with uh good news, the straight area pool filter replacement upgrades are complete. So that was a really big project that we were waiting a long time um to get done and it's a little bit of peace of mind when it comes to operation of the pool. So very, very happy to have that uh completed. Um, and kicking it back to uh Christmas time as well, um uh, we hosted our annual first night celebration on New Year's Eve. It was a very highly, oh yeah, we included some photos there. A a highly attended, very successful and fun event. So really big thanks to to Corinne and the facility and arena staff and all the volunteers who helped make that happen. Um, I think every year, um, residents from Port Hoxbury and the surrounding communities really, really look forward to this event um for their children. So thank you to everyone who made that a success. Um, we begun, uh, we began registration for our winter programming on January for thirteenth, um, and we're offering the usual mix of aquatics and recreation programs for various ages. And I think you have a hard copy there uh in your package with uh with my report. Um I do know that most of the swim lessons were waitlisted. That's that's the norm. Um, however, uh kudos to the team at the pool who always does a really good job at getting everybody in uh in a really short amount of time, uh because we were starting swim lessons pretty much right away uh next week. So uh, big thanks to them. Uh, the team at the pool is also hosting a national lifeguard course. Uh, it began in January. Uh, it's about half It's about halfway through. We have five participants taking the course and four of those participants are already working at the pool. So it's a, it's a really good, it's a good way to prepare for future staffing of the pool. So I'm very happy to have, to have that many people taking it. They'll be our future lifeguards and future swim lesson teachers and coaches. And I know, I know Deputy Mayor Langley is probably happy about that one as well. Lots of shows and events coming up. We, between February and April, we're hosting seven hockey tournaments, starting with the Tiger Mackey Tournament this weekend, which is always a, a long awaited tournament and very well attended and, and a great fundraiser. We also have some highlights. We've got, Sarek is hosting the high school girls' provincials. On March 22nd, 23rd, March 30th, the U-15 AAA Girls' Provincials will happen at the Civic Center. So that'll bring lots of, lots of hustle and bustle to the facility, which is wonderful. And then the last, they're sorry, the first weekend of April, we've got the U-16 Major Maritime Championships. And then four other tournaments, the Straight Richard Minor Hockey Tournament. So U-18 AA, U-9 Intermediate, U-13 C and U-11A. So lots of action happening in the arena for the last couple of months of operation. Performing Arts, we've got quite a few rentals, including Trent McClellan, which is this Saturday night. There's still tickets available for that. We've got Sean Magender, which is really exciting, especially if anybody's watching from. He's going to be coming on May 2nd to the Bearhead Room. We just booked a circus today, actually, for mid-May. So that will be on the arena surface. And then we've got a Taylor Swift tribute, Matt Minglewood Show, Privateers High Society, which is, which actually sold out in, in two days. And the Fabulously Rich, which is a tragically hip tribute band, also in May. So lots of, lots of action happening in the facility over the next few months. So keeping things exciting and busy. So it's pretty great. And then marketing, our page is up to just over 5,900 followers this month. And that is my report. Any questions? Sorry, that was a mouthful.
Everybody's astounded by all the.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
We'll move over to Sagin on Engineering and Public Works. And I think Jay is going to kind of support him to the end of his presentation. Where are you, Sagin?
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Deputy CU, councillors and the rest of the team. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on ongoing projects under engineering and public works. I briefly go through the key updates for the projects as outlined in the latest report being displayed on the screen. Moving on to the Eastern Town Active Transportation Project. The Eastern Town Active Transportation Project has been successfully completed, delivering a three meter wide pave multi-use pathway to enhance connectivity and accessibility. As far paving and landscaping were finalized on December 20, 2024, and trail is already in use by residents, providing significant concrete needs, especially for those in career states. The RFI crosswalk installation is completed and will be fully functional this week, most probably by tomorrow itself. The only pending task includes zebra crossing and lane markings, which are delayed due to weather and will be completed as conditions enroll. The next project is the Pineridge Drive AT connection. The Pineridge AT trail project was successfully completed as of December 20, 2024, on the same day as of the Eastern Town, providing a 22.5 meter wide paved multi-use pathway connecting my quarry drive and random roads. The main work includes zebra crossing, line markings and guardrail installation, which will be completed once weather permits. The pathway is already in use and is enhancing active transportation in the community. Moving on to the next, just regarding the public works building. As we know, the structural and exterior works involving steel structure direction, roofing and planning have been completed. The interior works are progressing well with in-floor heating installation ongoing currently. The project completion date has been revised to the end of April 2025, due to adverse weather The next project is the water system upgrades. We are facing some delay on this project as the general contractor for the tank works has encountered delays due to commitments to some other projects, which they have. As a result, the start of the tank direction has been postponed, with the contract now expected to commence by first of February. Other scope of work is in progress at both sides, despite challenges. Internet and trigger work and siding panel installation are progressing steadily. Pressure testing of the drain lines is underway, with no significant issue reported so far. Moving on to the next one is the sidewalk and accessibility upgrades. This project was successfully completed as of date December 2024. Sidewalk inspection was completed at all designated locations. Accessibility features such as tactile indicators and curb cuts have been incorporated. Despite minor weather delays, the project was completed on schedule, enhancing pedestrian infrastructure across key town streets. Moving on to the next one is the Sunset Park Active Transportation Trail. This is the new project, but we started in December. Work commenced on December 20, 2024, with the trail section cleared and gravel base probed. As far paving is scheduled for spring due to seasonal asphalt plan blow through. The project will resume once weather condition permits. And we hope it can be finished within the. And that's all for the projects and public works activity overview. The public work crew have been actively involved in infrastructure maintenance, town management and emergency repairs during this reporting period, which is from December 1, 2024 to January 16, 2025. There were several water being leak repairs. These have been addressed across various streets, ensuring continued water service reliability. Winter operations are in progress. Crews have been actively sorting streets and sidewalks and responding to snow events so far. Steel port hole repairs, like temporary old patching methods, are being used to maintain road safety as of now. And the other general managers, including routine leak detection service and infrastructure inspection continues. Public work remains committed to addressing emergency issues while maintaining the towns infrastructure in optimal condition. Thank you for your attention. If you have any questions.
Thank you, Sagin. Any questions for Sagin?
Thanks for your reports. Thank you. There's a lot of projects in the goal and a lot to manage. And the gold climate, it's hard to manage some of these projects, I can imagine. Just my two questions are, one, with the water storage tank, the delay, because the contractor's gone, going to other projects. Do we know within the contract, are, you know, how is this delay impacting us? And is, is there, is this going to cost us further? Or is there something in the contract, original contract, that is wholly into a timeline to completion? And is that in jeopardy?
We have like, and penalty clause in it. So we have talked about this contract, but we are giving them a fair time to come back and finish this. But even if they started it, but they at least, you know, six to eight weeks, maybe like 60 days to finish the tank. So even in this weather, if you are forcing them, they cannot finish, you know, like any continued space. They have to break in between if we have like an adverse weather condition, maybe like a slaving problem. So we are just waiting for a fair weather. Or at least that's why we are asking them to come and start like a base, so that we get, that have that assurance that they will be continuing to operate. So currently they go to start up with some other projects in the coastal area.
Okay. Thank you. And my, just my second question is, and now this is definitely not a person to you or any of the staff or whatever, is probably due to the age of the infrastructure, which was put in law before you. Just looking at from December 8th to the 15th, we had a lot of water breaks. And is there something, a one-off, like that high volume of breaks? Or do we anticipate this to continue?
Yeah.
You just can't continue. Okay, that's telling.
Yeah, Jason maybe can comment on, okay, what's, what's the norm?
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Sagin.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Through you, your worship, just to expand on, I mean, on the questions for, for Sagin, related to the frequency of water leak breaks. And this is a pretty, pretty long list in a relatively short period of time, but it is typical for, for what we've seen in previous winters here in Port Hoxbury. And I know it's, 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 you know, a time of year where other places in this climate would experience more, more frequent water leak breaks as well. So this list kind of ends on January 14th, but we've had a few other repairs since then. And so the, the staff has been, been really busy. And just want to give a bit of a shout out to the public works and operations staff with their dedicated work and, and phenomenal efforts over, over the holiday season and throughout the winter. They're relatively small crew in each, each front. They're very dedicated and work hard to maintain water service for, for the residents. And for the operations staff as well, I mean, it adds challenges. Maintaining the water system with only having one water tank at our disposal. So we have to be extra diligent with, with monitoring how our system is responding to, to leaks. And the staff have certainly worked a lot of extra time addressing issues, you know, effectively. So yeah, those guys deserve, deserve some, some, some kudos. Related to the contract question, I think what we were probably wondering is if there's like a, like a penalty clause into some of the contracts that we, that we have that can, you would hold a contractor to certain delivery. Typically, you don't see, we, we don't use those types of clauses in our, in our projects. For the simple reason being that when you have a penalty clause in a, in a project, most of the time you would also need to have an incentive clause. So if they come in ahead of schedule, you're committed to paying action. So time, timing of project delivery is certainly more risky this, this time of year throughout the winter. And it's unfortunate, but you know, we're, we're very hopeful that work will progress through the rest of the winter. We have a, a spring, so it's working available. And yet phenomenal work by, by Sagin on managing these projects. One of the busiest capital, capital years that we've, we've had in Port Hoxbury in a long time. I'm sure Terry is pretty too on that long, long list. But yeah, it wouldn't be possible with the work that Sagin is doing. What I want to talk to you about was one, one procurement exercise that we, that we've undertaken. So budget deliberations this time last year with previous council. One of the main priority items for public works was looking at the replacement of our, our, our one and only tandem dump truck, which also was used for winter control operations. So that's the, it's, it's a 2010 Peterbilt truck with a, with a U-body and, and plow. So that vehicle plows and salts our, our streets. We use it to haul aggregates for excavations, for water need breaks and such. And it served us very, very well. It's a 15-year-old vehicle. And surprisingly, it only has about 74,000 plonkers on it. That's a lot of trips around town, but for a 15-year-old's vehicle, it doesn't get on the highway much. So it was a priority. Council had, had allotted, you know, a, a budget amount to replace that, that truck, which is great. We've, we've been working over the summer and fall, looking at options for potentially taking advantage of standing opera arrangements with the province for a replacement vehicle. That wasn't successful. And we issued a tender for that, for the place on that truck in January, or December 11th. That tender, tender period deadline was January 16th, from which we had submissions from four potential bidders, three, three in Nova Scotia suppliers, one from Quebec. Some of the suppliers submitted multiple bid options. We've taken some time to evaluate those. And kind of a summary of the, of the bid submissions have been provided to senior management for, for review. So there's still a period of time that we need to fully review all, all the details and to make sure that, that we're not missing anything. But we're somewhat comfortable with the, with the recommendation right now. That being said, the pricing that we received was over budget. And, you know, we, we, we are very conscious of our, of our budget to allotments here for, for any purchase, given the taxpayers' money. This vehicle though, that we're, that we're looking to replace, we're in a bit of a different situation than a lot of other towns in the communities in the province, given that we only have one of them. We don't have any redundancy for this vehicle. It's a, it's our only dump truck, plow truck. We have smaller plow trucks that we use on streets as well. When we built the specification for the vehicle, we tried to model it on other similar builds for, for, from other towns as, as well. Keeping in mind that we probably don't need a lot of the options that the communities may have asked for, for, for their bill. So we, we tailored our, our truck build so, so it met our needs. And that was, and it was reviewed with staff and agreed upon. But in the same breath, we didn't want to add a lot of options that would, we, we don't necessarily need and would add to cost. So we were very cautious of that through, through the procurement exercise. And in our evaluation, we're, we're also conscious of the fact that because it's our only vehicle, we don't have redundancy in, in fleet, that serviceability from the suppliers and availability of parts is extremely important. So that's going to be factored into our, into our recommendation as well. That being said, we're, we're very close to hopefully moving forward with the purchase option. But we do have to make council aware that there's, there's an overage in the prices received.
And so, yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. So the budget was built around, you know, procuring rotation from companies of make and model and options that we felt would satisfy requirements of the department. But then when we tendered, the pricing didn't have been consistent with that. So we did try to ensure that the budget was adequate. But, you know, things change and, and went through this process and the, we, we anticipate, we still have some review to do, but based on the range of pricing that has come in, we anticipate we're going to need another $30,000 of budget to be able to procure an appropriate piece of fleet for the department. The budget that we had set when the capital plan was approved in June was $309,000. So we're asking for council's consideration to increase the previously approved budget for the tandem plow dump truck by $30,000. Increase the previously approved budget for the tandem plow dump truck by thirty thousand dollars to be financed through the operating reserve, which is the same. Area which, which the initial capital amount was, was being financed through, so. Happy if there's any questions on that. But if there's consensus to move that forward to the public meeting, then we'll bring that forward.
Any questions or comments?
No, no comments from me, we should support both next forward to the platform.
That's a good.
Would you retain the old truck for redundancy or?
The, the old truck, no, we, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be in our, in our plan to keep that roadworthy. It's cost quite a lot in the last number of years to, to keep that vehicle on, on the road. And, you know, our, our staffing complement right now probably isn't such that we would need the second vehicle if we have a brand new one. In fleet would be, would be good for, for. It may be something in long term planning as we grow, maybe we don't wait fifteen years to replace the next one, maybe we can. Look at if, if we grow and we, you know, and, and, and there's a need for that vehicle, we'll look at. Possibly procure another one in seven years and then see how, see how. See how things evolve out of there. We'll be looking at trading that people, we're selling it as a surplus.
Thanks too. Counselor, what would you have to say?
So would that surplus go back into this reserve, the operating reserve?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's the, the trade in value that was offered, hoping it, you know, if we do move ahead. We're selling it independent of trade in, it's already factored into that, into that budget requirement. Yeah, so it is, it is, it's already part, so the truck is actually forty, we won't get into specifics. But it's already, it would be, it is, it is reducing the amount of money that we need to take from reserve. To be able to afford the new vehicle, it's just my question.
Yes, good.
Well, any further questions, counsel?
Your comments. And I commend the staff, the town staff and everybody. That was working so hard and that, I know you guys were, everybody was so busy, so.
Pass it on, thank you. My questions were addressed earlier on the redundancy, so hopefully plans.
So it looks like we do not get such to move that forward to our next public meeting. Any other items in the comments here?
Thank you. And that's still public work, so finance is neck. Thank you. Oh, works pictures in my. There we go, I don't do that, I promise. I'll start just with, this is the time of year when our assessment role for upcoming year is released from PBSC. So wanted to give council a bit of more of a min depth, review of the assessments and the trends. So I know we've discussed this at our orientation, but Proxbury has had a bit of a challenge in, in assessment growth, so. We've had relatively flat or declining assessments for, for a number of years and really wasn't until our. Twenty twenty four fiscal year that we started seeing any new legal growth. Which is very positive and that growth has continued in twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six, consistent with the national and provincial trends. But we kind of go back to a base year of twenty fourteen. Our assessment has grown on average on the residential side, two point six percent over that twelve year period. And our commercial assessment has grown one percent over, on average over that twelve year period, so although we've seen, you know. Decent growth in the last three years, over that period of time, it's been pretty modest. Uh, yeah, so this is just kind of a graphic presentation of, of our commercial and assessments over time. So you can see in the twenty twenty four. In the twenty twenty four years when we started to see a bit of an increase in the commercial assessment and it's continued into twenty twenty six fiscal year. Same on the residential side, so relatively flat up until the twenty twenty three fiscal year and then saw some relatively. Positive growth, so. That's good, just so you kind of see what the assessment obviously is what we use to. It's a major component of our budget, assessment times tax rate equals our taxation revenue. So just to give you some information as we're getting, moving into budget season. What the assessments this year mean in comparison to last year. So our residential assessments went from a hundred and seventy four million for twenty twenty five fiscal year, so the year we're in right now. And have grown to a hundred and eighty six million for the twenty twenty six fiscal year, so that's a seven, just over seven percent increase over last year. Which equates to assuming tax rates to be remaining stable, about two hundred twenty five thousand dollars in revenue. On the commercial side. Seeing our commercial assessments increasing from just under fifty nine million to just under sixty two million. For this fiscal year, this upcoming fiscal year, so a four point nine eight percent increase, which equates to about a hundred twenty eight thousand dollars, so. Overall increase in revenue with tax rates remaining stable of about three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Just, you know, that, that's, that's. That's good that we've had growth and I'll talk about some of our challenges we've had, but. You know, it's about, it's less than four percent of our annual budget. That would be seen in that revenue growth, so just to give you some information on growth that we've seen. This year compares into the prior year, we're seeing that that growth is, is slowing somewhat. So this was from an article for the twenty twenty four assessment role being the role that we use for our twenty twenty five. The year we're in right now, but you can see there like, like there was significant increases in, in assessment like four hundred forty six million for Iverness County or twenty four percent. We were fifty five point seven million and seventeen percent in that year. And in the current year's growth, what we're looking at, so you can see it's seven point one for Iverness County. This is on the overall entire assessment, which includes non taxable assessment, but it's a good measure for, for growth. Victoria County at nine point nine percent, Richmond at eight point four and ourselves at eight point four, so. We're not seeing the same levels of growth that we saw in the last couple of years. So it's very encouraging to see that growth, but again, it's not. Something we should get extremely excited about, a little bit of cautious around, cautious around it. It is a provincial and international trend and we've typically been lagging behind that in, in growth. And again, our average growth over the last twelve years has been quite modest. When we look at. Assessment, the assessment based on market growth alone is slowing and we've seen that kind of year over year, we looked at that previous slide. But you can see the provincial average growth in twenty twenty five was nine point seven six percent, so we were at eight point nine, I think in the previous slide. Seventeen point seven two in the previous year, this is the entire province. Twenty twenty three, there was eighteen point three two percent increase on average, twenty twenty two was eight point seven four. And then prior to that, two point nine six, two point four nine, one point eight five, one point two nine, so we're probably going to be trending back towards those more historical levels. We did see that bump in twenty twenty three, but growth is probably going to be moving. Closer to those more historical levels, so. You know, as we've been discussing around these tables and part of your strategic planning session that you went through, growth through development is key. We can't, you know, just bank on growth through marketing pieces, so it's continue to, to focus on, on investments and, and. Strategizing around that, which is something that this council is talking about a lot, which is very positive. And just, yeah, our, our, our budget for, for a number of years was balanced by utilizing reserves, so. These annual increases in assessment and this growth that we're seeing is, is necessary to be able to balance our budget with costs of inflation and increasing. And if we want to do anything service wide wise, you know, these, this growth is, is essential. And just to note, there is an appeal process, I think I noted the, the dates in the report I provided, so. Notices of assessment went out to all property owners in Nova Scotia on January thirteenth. They reflect the market value as of January first, twenty twenty four and the physical state, so it was, it was actually in place as of December first, twenty twenty four. The appeal period is open until February thirteenth, so although those are the numbers of assessment we have right now. Those can fluctuate based on the results of those appeals that folks have put in through PBSC. That's all I have on assessment, but just a couple of quick notes on the audit, so the annual audit for twenty twenty five fiscal year. The planning for that has begun, begun with Grant Thornton, that will continue over the next few weeks. Once that audit plan is completed, we'll have a meeting with the audit committee and the auditor will review that plan, so, you know, later on in. Probably early spring is when we'll probably aim to have that audit committee meeting in advance of audit fieldwork. Staff have been, you know, looking to, have started planning their budgets, determining what their operational requirements are. Identifying what funding requirements are, are there, what their capital needs are, so we're compiling that information, I've requested staff to provide information to. Myself to be compiled by the end of the month, so we're aiming to. Have a package delivered to council for review and then deliberation probably mid February. And then on the IT upgrades, I know we had discussed that previously, but just to give. An update to council, over the weekend, the networking equipment in this facility was entirely replaced, including Wi Fi network. So you may have noticed if you connect to Wi Fi, it was a little bit of a different process, but. What should happen now, if you're on the guest, when you come back in the building, you should then reconnect, so you don't have to go through this flash page, which I think folks will find very helpful. And there's lots of other great stuff that's happened kind of in the. Electrical rooms, that's, I guess, not as exciting, but as you're important as well and, and. The work was complete by straight IT and hats off to them for working over the weekend and, and completing that and really. No significant. Knock on wood, no significant issues with, in relation to that entire network changeover, so. You know, a couple of hiccups and kinks that had to be worked out on, on Monday, Tuesday, but overall, a really successful transition, I'd say, so. Happy to answer any questions that council may have on those items.
Any, any questions?
It's day one.
Yeah, that's, that's great, that's a good reason.
That's it, yeah, so if there's no questions. Reese Snell will provide an update on facilities operations first.
Good evening, everyone, through your worship, just started the civic center, you're getting really close to being a, a full comfort center, excuse me. Our back, our mobile generator that we received back in the fall, we're getting ready to. Excuse me, commission it next month, all the pieces are in place now, the supplier will be on site on February fifth. To make sure that that unit is done what it's supposed to do, so our bare head has been. Changed a bit, our, our canteen and our kitchen has been changed a bit, we've made some changes to the mechanical operation systems and the, and the heating systems. In the, in the building so that we have the ability to, to open as a full comfort center, provide heat, showers. Food options at warm spot to be, if necessary, so. That started probably a couple of years ago now, so we're getting close to finishing that project. I just noted that's a summer student job application, which usually goes in in January, they've changed it to, it went in in December. So we don't normally hear on that until. May, April, May, so. It's usually mid to late April and we bring the students on to May, so I may just let that fly in my reports until. I get a response from, from the, that application and I'll tell council at that time. Michelle had mentioned the work that's been done at the pool, our new controllers and filters are in place, there's a couple of pictures there just to, to reference what we've invested in. Certainly seems to be a really good upgrade to what we've been, to what we've had, the ancient infrastructure that was there on the filters that we were repairing. You know, once in a while, but it was really critical that. We were lucky to be able to repair them when we could, we would have been, our, our aquatics programs would have been impacted a lot more than they had been. So we've got some really good stuff in place that should make this pretty efficient for the, the next number of years. Some improvements still going on at the, with the good weather in December, we've been able to still get some groundwork done at Sunset Park. Sagent had mentioned that the, we did an extension for the AT trail that was there. We also were able to get a walkway and a seating area stuffed in around the statue that's there. So the AT trail, as Sagent mentioned, that's ready. We were, we were able to prep that and have it ready for asphalt, so when the spring comes, unfortunately. The asphalt plants didn't stay open as long as the, the nice weather lasted, but we didn't have any control over that. At the Enrily Field, although the nice weather was good to get some extra groundwork done. Couldn't get the heavy equipment in that was necessary to, to get the poles up, once the ground gets saturated, so. We're going to get back to get the poles up this week now that the ground's frozen, so that heavy equipment's coming in and they're, they're scheduled to be on site tomorrow morning at eight AM. To get another pole up. And they'll go pretty quickly, they should finish them this week. The final inspection from NSP has, has been completed and noted there, there's a, there's a new AT trail, the groundwork is done for that from, from quarry drive right over to. Almost to the soccer, soccer building there, the soccer field, so that will. Enhance accessibility and, and have people a, a pretty nice walking path and access to, to both fields actually and, and to the clubhouse that's going to be over there. Bootbank is moving along, busy as ever, they're looking at doing some renovations on the inside to. To get people a larger waiting room and have people in out of the weather and in out of the, the public. When they're open, whatever days they're open, so they're doing some work with, with the. The lady that works with Joe Janega.
Kathy?
Kathy.
Gaskell.
Gaskell, she's, she's coming up with some options for them there and, and they've got funding through Feed Nova Scotia to do the work, so. It's all positive there.
As they were closed today due to the weather, so that's a good.
Yeah, they made that decision yesterday with the, with the cold temperatures and they didn't want people being outside, so they closed today.
It's good news.
The airport, that job is complete, final inspection was done with myself, Dan, Deck Engineering and Northern Construction. Minimal deficiencies, more. The width of some of the line markings that were put on has to be changed a little bit, stuff like that, just some shouldering and that, nothing really major in that job. It's going to be, it's going to enhance that operation when they get going again in the spring. Read considerably, so, and they've started, I just found out after my report, they've started. They're going to be sharing another helicopter service this spring. For chores and, and transportation to certain. Destinations close to, you know, within. So far, but that service is coming back to the airport. Accessibility and worship, we have a meeting scheduled for twenty seventh of January. We also co-hosted an information session with the accessibility director of King's Province, just how. Our, our municipal plans, our, we've, we've come to the time when we have to review them, that's across the board for everybody, so. With that, we also have to add some extra components as you see there and we'll have to upgrade our, update our committee to reflect the changes also, so. We'll be working on that, we have another regional meeting the end of this week between myself, Iverness County, Richmond County. Victoria County, it's only been a minute, so yeah, we're meeting on Friday remotely, but. We'll have some more comments on that probably next meeting. And that's my report, happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you so much for the, any questions?
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions and I'm looking at the time to walk, I mean, maybe later if we need to.
Gone last.
Yeah, you know, the, is there, and this probably should have came with the director of finance and the IT. Force yet, but is there intentions for Wi Fi upgrades to the system for the pool, so can we look that better remotely?
Yeah, we're just waiting for Belle to, to make that connection.
Good.
That was part of the install.
Okay, and the other quick question for you, you mentioned the comfort area and the heating. I understand that there is pockets of area within the civic center which probably is getting hit to, I think administrative area upstairs. Is there any plan to address that or is that done, being looked at?
I think the, the occupants of those spaces are addressing themselves a little bit, more.
Yeah.
They, I guess, say. The colder it is, the more happier our heating system is here and shuts down, it's the ice plant for the, for the ring, so the colder it is, the happier the ice is. Name, I guess, say, the colder it is, the more happier our heating system is here and and shuts down, it's the ice plant for the for the ring, so the colder it is, the happier the ice is. And the less demand there is to be able to heat from that ice, from that slab of concrete. Uh.
That's the problem.
And when the ground gets this cold, there's not a lot of chance to pick it up and bring it back in, so it's not a lot of heat sources when it's really cold. What we do, or what I do is I trick the plant out, like yesterday, Sunday, I started raising the temperature of the ice to bring it up so that over the next few days I can start bringing it down again. It's not efficient, but it gives us, it gives us heat.
True.
So the ice plant kicked off this morning at five o'clock, uh, because it was too cold, a little bit too cold, and that's the safety feature that's into it. It's either, you know, thirty-three degrees, it will shut off, and then a hundred degrees, it will shut off. So that's where we at, that's what we've been for twenty years, we've been battling, that's that's the only, really the only drawback to that geothermal system, is there at the mercy of of taking heat from that base slab to to do a lot of things with it and we don't get to send a whole lot out because the building uses it all, we don't even get to, you know, the pool isn't even accessible, a lot of the ground through the the winter months.
Interesting, yeah, thank you.
It is a flaw in that that system, but there's, we, the newer systems that have gone in the last six, eight years, the geothermal systems, there's been no change to that, you're just getting the the coldness from the ground, the same way you get the heat in the shoulder seats, it's really cool.
Yeah, yeah, any other questions? Thank you for your question.
Well.
Nice point. Yeah, thanks, uh, Sajin, Jason, Michelle, it's nice to see you all, especially you can do in December.
Oh, my God.
And we can, uh, fantastic. Great.
Dean Hatcher. Well, the book is very short, you know, it's what a name breaks. All right, so go to other business, agenda item number seven. Uh, we have a request coming forth from the twenty twenty-five U-15 AAA recaps, uh, the funding request, and I air it will review, so I'm sorry, I'll see around them.
Yeah, so was part of your package, there was the request from the fifteen AAA team along with the assistance policy, so um, that tournament is being hosted here at the Prosperity Civic Center. Um, the pricing of the ads is included as part of the request, the team, um, and their locations, uh, is also part of that request. Um, from looking at the policy and council have done things outside the policy in the past, and that that's your, that's your uh for your deliberation. Um, but to me, this, i- if it was being considered, would be considered under hosting tournaments, competi- competitions and meetings, uh, which is on page three in the top. Um, which is to assist organizations in hosting a tournament, cultural event, medium of competition within the town of Proxbury, which is would fit. Uh, and the activity must expose local residents to a sporting, media, cultural opportunity, this would, and it's a provincial um activity and the maximum funding would be two hundred under that policy, but up to council uh for the deliberation of that.
Um, so we we do have some little room within our donations, what have, yeah, to be able to accommodate it, two hundred dollar reservations?
Yeah.
That's the thoughts of council, we want to follow policy and uh to move forward a recommendation to a two hundred dollar contribution, whether from the meeting.
I did read the criteria. Yeah, I'll be happy to help them. Also, Barrett?
Yeah, I think it's a good opportunity for exposure for the facility, the town, plus the economic, uh, you know, by hosting it, uh, for accommodations and.
Are you okay with the two hundred dollar policy?
No.
Second one.
Uh, I'm supportive. I would, first of all, I do see there in the funding request, there is two, you know, based on advertising.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we're basically just a thought to that advertising and the our best to uh lower ourselves.
Yeah, we could, uh, I guess, provide the two hundred and then take the, which would have include
One eighth page.
The one eighth page, so we get some advertising added, plus the beginning of the bonus to that.
And this gave me opportunity to look at the application process.
Yeah.
Uh, and uh, so that's interesting. Or especially for teams that have players from or uh from the town. Yeah, so if we're doing this for them, then I would say we're looking to support those with players from Proxbury. I would hope.
Um, so council for it.
Sure, I'm supportive.
Okay, so we'll, we'll get it, the motion, I guess, would be to approve the funding for QCU fifteen AAA white caps in support of their provincial tournament in the amount of two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And that would be um to be moved forward to, I think there's consensus to move that forward to.
Yeah, so we'll, so we we will make the motion tonight, we'll we'll make it at our next public meeting. Great.
Perfect. Um, the next item is a request that came toward from the Girl Guards of Canada for World Thinking Day um, for February twenty-second. And it's a simple request to have our wave light up on the uh twenty-second of February. And it'll give us the.
Yeah, so um, the electrical is installed there, but the fixtures aren't at the uh our installation at this point in time, they may be by February twenty-second. Um, there was another community group that I think they bought solar lights and they led up the the our the way in purple um, previously. Um, I guess our recommendation would be, if the fixtures are installed, to to light it up. If not, we do have some uh a light installation around the entrance to the this facility uh that we could light up blue and lighting up the wave. Um, so I guess the motion for consideration would be to approve lighting of the air installation or the PH, Proxbury Civic Center exterior on February second in support of world of um Girl Gods of Canada World Thinking Day. And we would follow, yeah, if if the fixtures are installed, we like the wave up, but if not, we would just do the exterior and then next year.
Sure, maybe, so we we can accommodate their request in some fashion.
Absolutely.
Is uh council supportive of moving that forward first for other public meeting? It is good.
Yeah.
Okay, the next item, the flag raising schedule, um, we'll also move that forward, we we typically approve our our flag raising schedule um in early in the year. Uh, and then if any other flag raising requests come up, you know, that falls outside this this schedule, then we would do that on an individual basis on a promotion um to approve, so. Um, just for your information, it's something that we typically do, so we'll move that forward uh for a motion to approve that our our next public meeting. Any questions on discussion? Okay, the next item, uh, so the council committee assignments, um, over the next week or so, Melissa and I will just reach out to each of you, I'd like to have a, just a conversation about um, these committees, just to kind of feel like your your um preferences, but also to take, you know, just have the opportunity to you know, hear about, you know, some of your strengths and and experience that you may have to lend to any of, to any of these committee assignments. Um, and hopefully through that process, we'll all be able to uh make some solid recommendations at our um next meeting uh to hopefully uh ratify um some committee assignments to each of these committees. Other than that, that's just for information, and we don't have any improved additions. Um, our future meeting, uh, we'll, our, we'll take, thank you for opening that session, we'll be in lieu of our public meeting on February fourth. Um, and we'll have a joint public meeting and committee of all on February eighteenth. And I would ask for meeting adjournment. By Council Barrett, seconded by Councilor Iff, all those in favor, please say that I'm saying yes.
Yeah.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned, thank you so much, and also.